We're good to go. So at six o'clock, those calling meeting order if you can please. First order of business, are there any additions, deletions, corrections, subtractions to the agenda? Are you done with your motion? Accept the agenda?
Yes.
Was it? I'm sorry.
Move to accept the agenda. No, I just said when you asked the question, I said no.
Okay, sorry.
So move to accept the agenda.
Support.
Motion support. Last chance for questions or comments. Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. We have an agenda. Next up is roll call. Is that been completed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart.
Thank you all very much.
A note, if I may, after the Pledge of Allegiance, just to let you know, next Thursday the 18th, I believe, Tuesday the 18th, the Alma High School Panther Marching Band is playing at the Detroit Tigers game with the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me get the date out of it. I'm pretty sure it's the 18th. It's 6:30.
Yeah.
Yes, should be about 6:20 to 6:30 is when the National Anthem should be. Detroit Alma High School band is playing.
Hopefully they'll win that day. Hopefully the Tigers will win.
That would be nice.
Oh, that's asking a lot.
For sure. Hey, miracles happen.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to, we're going to take a motion to approve the minutes of the March 28, 2023 regular session and the March 28, 2023 closed session. Your pleasure.
So moved. Support.
Motion support. Were there any comments, questions, criticisms, changes, updates? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving right into hearings. First up, we are to hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing special assessment districts number 2023-1 and 2023-2 for the Harvard Capital Avenue, Capital Avenue improvement project, sanitary sewer leads and sidewalks respectively. Your pleasure.
Move to open the public hearing.
Support.
Motion support. Comments or questions? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried and we open the hearing. And who's taking the lead?
Dave. We got Dave. Washington.
Well, it's kind of hard to say faster times, so just bear with me when I have to talk about that.
It's hard for me to say it once.
Yes.
It'll get tricky. Okay. As the mayor mentioned, this is for the Harvard Avenue sanitary sewer lead. This is part of our capital improvement programs for street reconstruction. This is typical for the last 15, 10 to 15 years now for street construction projects. What we do is when we do the construction of the road, we'll replace the utilities underneath. And as a part of that, we replace the sanitary sewer laterals. That does a couple of things. Keeps the need for the new road to be opened up, which makes the road last longer. Number two is it gets a watertight connection, so we can help reduce inflow infiltration into our wastewater system streams.
Sorry to interrupt you, Dave. I hope it's okay, but just for people that don't know, when you talk about the lateral, what does that mean?
That's the part that goes, the portion that we're going to replace for the laterals, the portion that goes from between the sidewalk to the sanitary main itself. Your lateral consists of, from the main all the way inside of your house. That's what takes your wastewater and flush your toilet. And that goes into the sanitary sewer system. What we replace as a part of this program is, if it's anything other than Schedule 26 plastic, we'll replace it and then the city will pay for half. The property owner will pay the other half. And what will be paid for is exactly what gets put in the ground. If you have Schedule 26 plastic or better, we'll leave it in the ground. Property owner doesn't get assessed anything and just use the couple fee that takes to connect it.
Thank you.
Yep. As you can see, this is a map that shows the region where we're proposing the work to be done. This is for Harvard Avenue between the Superior Street and Vassar. Whoops, I'm sorry. And what we've done is broken it down on an average per house. What we do is replace the Y. That's the connection for the lateral into the main. And then six inches of SDR 26 plastic. And that's going from the main to just beyond the curb line between the sidewalk and curb, depending on where we get a good connection to make. And then the sanitary cleanout. And we'll put that between the sidewalk and the curb. And that's if there's any kind of obstructions in the future, you can clean from the main, or excuse me, from the sidewalk to the main. It's an access port. This is an average cost per house. Some houses have a projected longer footage, but that's the average that we came up with. And these are based on the bid prices. So we were lucky this time, we didn't have to do any projections. This is based on what we received last week for bids. Due to the luck of timing. And right here is each proposed property that we believe that could be affected. What we do is look through the overall in that last map that I just showed you. We'll add any house that could potentially be connected to this sewer. If it's not connected, when we find out during construction that it's not connected, we can always delete you off the SAD, but we cannot add you. So we always err on the side of conservancy to add as many potential places that could be, so everybody gets a fair share in their half of paying for it. You'll notice that 614 is double the price. That's for the college. There's at least two or three laterals, and we just combine those for that. So that explained the footage. And the sanitary is not exactly in the center. So you'll notice a few of them are projecting at 22 feet and some of them at 25 feet. And the cost per foot would have broken down. As far in the city, we'll pay for half, like I mentioned, for everything as part of the SAD if it's not plastic. Are there any questions or anything?
Okay, any questions from the board or comments? Have you done this before? Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public here? Probably has to be from us. So is there any members of the public who would like to address the commission on the topic of this proposal? No more than you got, Dave. Okay. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Support.
Okay, motion support. Last chance. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion is carried and the hearing is closed. Now, we would consider a resolution to authorize the Harvard Sanitary Sewer Leads Construction Project to establish the number of annual installment payments allowed and approve the special assessment district rule as presented. Your pleasure for that item.
Move to adopt.
Motion support.
One thing to add to your motion is the amount of years, yes. And years and the, can be, a number of installments over coming years, we usually do that. Just so the public knows that typically we recommend a 1.5 is what the staff recommend that you allow that. And the, there is an interest charge to that. The special assessment shall bear an interest at 1% over the U.S. Treasury bond rate at the time of the final confirmation of the special assessment rule. So, and that's done once everything is paid and project is done, paid, and then we know exactly what everybody owes. And that's when something is done, so.
The property owner, if they owe an assessment, they can pay the full thing upfront, or they can schedule it over a number of periods, a number of payments, depending on what we determine here. Remind me, please, if we say up to five years, can the individual property owner perhaps negotiate a three-year schedule? Or once we do five, is it all five?
It can be, it can be five and there's no penalty for paying up.
No penalty for prepayment, so if somebody can pay early, they're allowed to do that. They're allowed to do that.
Okay, that's correct.
Okay. Anybody else have questions about the scheduling or potential scheduling of payments or anything else to go along with that? And you want to amend your motion to include a certain time period?
A motion to adopt with the prepayment of five years with the interest of 1% over.
1% over the Treasury bond rate.
Five-year Treasury would be the. Okay, we have motion support. Can we give this a motion? Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next, we are to consider a resolution to authorize the Harvard Avenue sidewalk construction project, projection, establish the number of annual installment payments allowed and approve the special assessment district rule as presented. Your pleasure.
Move to approve. Adopt.
Okay. Did you want to say anything more about that, David, or?
I can wait till the presentation, or did you have anything specific?
Well, we've got the motion on the table right now.
Oh, okay. I hear, I hear the presentation now.
We really haven't covered it yet, so I'm sure we don't want to hear it before we vote.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Yes. Okay. This is for the construction of a sidewalk on Harvard. If anybody is familiar with that, there's sidewalk on both sides, but, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's, that was a sensitive. Up at the north end, there's a section that is not there. There's a sidewalk that goes from Charles over to Harvard Avenue, but that little section in red that you can see up at the north end, the top of the screen, that's a section where there is no sidewalk. It stops just shy of that, that house up at the north end. So this is the opportunity, if we were, we were doing the street, if the commission so decides, we can extend that. So it's contiguous to go on both sides, on Vassar from Harvard all the way to Charles Avenue. And there are two property owners that are addressed in this special assessment. We'll go on to, I'm sorry, go on to this next sheet. 904 Vassar, which has the majority of it, and 614 West Superior, which is the college. And what we've done is come up with a price per square foot based on the bid prices. And what we would do is special assess based on their millennial footage of concrete that's placed. So that's what the measurements that we've come up with that it would take to extend that, so that there is no gap in the sidewalk there for the north end apartment. And the city would pay, if so, if this project was for, the city would pay for half. The property owner would pay the other half.
Any comments from the board? Michelle? Could you go back to that picture for us for a second, please, Dave?
That's correct. That's across the street from my house.
Yeah. I recognize the place. I was just trying to figure out if it's, how much sense it makes, and I'm a fan of sidewalks, don't get me wrong. You know, because if I'm walking down Harvard on the college side and I want to go down Yale, I can obviously cross Harvard before I get to the, across the, basically, college driveway. And then to go back over to the other side, there is not going to be a sidewalk there until I get past the driveway then, right?
No, if you were to properly cross, you'd go Vassar to Yale, then go south, and then cut across. There's no crosswalk on that side of the curve.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. Will we stop? Karen is on the list for the first one that we just passed, and I think she came in after we passed the resolution, so I don't know if she has any questions about what may have transpired before she came in.
Okay. Can we circle back on that one since we're, we're, okay, we finished the conversation here of the sidewalk? Is the, did you talk to the property owners up there? Are they in favor of this?
No, I have not. This is something like Virginia Avenue, excuse me. I keep calling it Virginia Avenue. Sorry, Iowa Avenue, where there was that gap in the sidewalks go to the rail trail. You notice that in this one, there's a gap that we want to address. And if the commission is so inclined, they said we could extend this with an SAD. If not, then we can, we can move forward. But with the construction costs that we've got, typically these are a little cheaper, so if this was a consideration, and I don't know if the foot traffic warrants it, but that's why we're here tonight to discuss it.
And so you, the property owners have been notified of this hearing, correct? So they're aware of it and you didn't hear anything back from them? So presumably they would be in favor.
Unless they're here at the scene, but I have heard nothing leading up to this.
I was asking her if she was.
So nothing else from the commission? Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on this or question? No members of the public. We have motions being scored on the table. All those in favor would be yes?
Yes.
Any opposed would be no? If you didn't set the timeframe, you did. Because I was given the recommendation, sorry.
amended to for the five years.
Roger made the motion.
Roger made the motion?
I'd say.
Okay, so your motion includes amendment for five years?
Yes.
Five years?
Yeah.
Does that satisfy that?
Yeah.
Okay. So once again, we'll take the vote. All those in favor would be yes?
Yes.
Any opposed would be no? Motion is carried. Thank you. Sorry about the confusion, folks. Okay, yeah, let's get back. You had, did you have a question about the assessment?
I want to know. I wanted to know about the first one, and I have a comment if I could.
Okay. We're a little bit further, but yeah, if you'd like to.
We could reopen. We could reopen. Just so she's not out of order with it? Is that the best way? I moved to reopen the hearing and the SAD 1 and 2.
Motion support. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? We reopen the hearing. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, no, I live at 435 Harvard. And I do agree the sewer needs fixed. It already just backed up this last two weeks into my house. But I guess I want to see if there's any way to amend or make a motion that they can't flush those flushable wipes, because that's what clogged our sewer. Like make a city notice or something that they're not one of the great ones. Clogging problems for lots of people.
I believe it's against our, I don't know if we have a policy or if there's no way to force it, it's a trial.
Correct. Because you have to know what a violating party is.
It's against our, I mean, the, our system says you're not supposed to flush those.
And we have put that in the sewer bills annually. I don't know if it occurred this year, but I know in the past we have put that on there either annually or semiannually on the sewer bills to request not to do that.
Yeah, it's a nationwide problem. Nothing unique to us.
It really, it really comes down to knowing where they come from. Because we were having trouble, I'll say, this was pre, obviously pre-COVID, but I would say close to eight years ago, we were getting substantial wipes and they were, there was enough of them. It was probably coming from a healthcare area. There were so many of them. But you can't pinpoint where they're coming from. You can't say, okay, it's coming from there. There's, there's no way to really know that. All I can do is I try to educate folks to please don't do this. And even, it goes beyond even the flushable wipes, because I say they're flushable. Even paper towel is not ideal to be flushing down the toilet. Someone like Bounty and those sort of things, they're very, they're very rigid. And when they hit that water, they start to create what you know is damning. And it causes all kinds of problems. So we do try to let folks know not to do flushable wipes, but also you shouldn't be flushing paper towel either.
Should we only try the paper?
It should only be toilet paper.
And then is it like a city ruler, he went on for two hours and he called central dispatch, but they wouldn't send anyone until a plumber came out? Is there any way for them to know that? Like my sub pump was working, but they would not send any city person to fix it. I had to wait hours as water kept filling.
You shouldn't out speak for that, because that's my department. You shouldn't have to wait hours. What you would be asked as a question is, if you would like to have the city come out and flush it and it's not, or it's a problem on our end, then we would have to charge you for the time and the flusher truck's time to do that. There's, majority of the time, backups in the sewers will come from us, but what should have occurred was your ask. Would you, if you want the city to move forward with it and if it's not us, you'd have a charge. Or if your plumber's already looked at it, knows it's us, then it's a free call for us.
Central dispatch won't send you unless someone can tell them, tell there's a plumber. Because I mean, I had already called and told them, I'm going for two hours. My sub pump's working, they're not sending the city. They didn't offer me a charge. I wouldn't have as much damage.
What day of the week was it? What day of the week?
It was April Fool's Day.
Which was a what?
Friday into Saturday.
We have people on call for that.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we wouldn't have staff to do it.
So we need to, Dave needs to, or one of us needs to speak with central dispatch. Sorry that you had to experience that. We'll get that taken care of. If they're aware of that.
The process is they act as a hotline though, right?
Correct.
That's the number people should call at central dispatch. 911, the central dispatch.
Correct. So I will talk to them and make sure, but I apologize for that. But no, you should, you have a choice. What they should do is say if you've had a plumber there and knows it, we'll send them out. If not, and if the problem is not on our end, then they'll just be invoiced for our time to go out there and look at it. But should not take that long.
They're missing the last half.
And the other thing, just while I have your attention, your sub pump is not related, should not be related to your sanitary sewer. So if your sub pump kicks on for any number of reasons, as should, those should not ever be connected to the system.
Well, the industry has backed up though.
When the water can't go anywhere, it was kept, it just kept bringing it in and looking for it, because it kind of came out and didn't.
I just had a question. I mean, you publicize to the residents, how do you get to know all those college students that are potentially flushing down?
We reach out to the college and they talk to their facilities director as well and ask them, as a part of orientation services, things like that, to remind the students not to do that. Staff as well.
We can narrow down sections of town that's probably, probably coming from, but there's no way to say, yep, you did it. You owe, you owe this or this. Yeah, so we do it other than just keep educating. And it doesn't help when the, the industry that's produced these things have said it's okay to, it's okay to do that. It's an ongoing fight, even at the federal level, to ban that language on, on product and say it's flushable.
It's flushable, it doesn't go away when you flush it, it just doesn't go in the system.
They get caught up very easily on the pipe is what our issue is.
And every system has the same challenge. Anything anybody can do to this? It's not a campaign that anybody wants to embrace, really, I'm afraid, so.
No.
Sorry that you had to speak.
No, it's not. And Mr. Goodall has a very nice tone, but he has to.
Sorry you had to go through that. Any other comments or questions related to that topic? If not, we, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing again.
So moved.
Motion support. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion is carried. We have closed the hearing once more. Next, we are to hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the special assessment district number 2023-3 for the north of Washington Sanitary Sewer Leads Construction Project. Your pleasure.
Move to open the public hearing.
Support. Motion support. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried and we have it to your public hearing.
Yes.
So this is my third and final one. Apologize for taking up everybody's time up here, but first of all, is there anyone from this area? This goes from Washington Avenue to Pine Avenue. Are there any residents that are within this region of the special assessment? There's a couple of reasons I would address that, but if not, we'll scroll through this one. This is the region we're talking about. The red squiggly line shows it. This will actually be part of the approval here later on in the agenda, but this will be a two-year project because of the amount of millennial footage that we're doing. And there's no, and we're also going to, it's going to be slow going. This will be a lot of groundwater that's going to have to be contended with and going across country. So if the contractor doesn't get done this year, they'll start up in the spring and finish it. This is also time sensitive because to get this done before Pine Avenue reconstruction. The reason is there's a, there's a severe belly, a low spot in the sanitary sewer on Pine Avenue. We were aware of that. We made a water main break about 10-plus years ago. It's where this project came from, is to try to get rid of that low spot in the sanitary because it frequently has backups and it's a main artery from, from the hospital. This project will replace that sanitary, it'll actually upsize a couple of sections of that, just because this line runs full all the time. A lot of that is probably groundwater is a lot of the reason for that. And as a part of this, just as we mentioned before with the projects, we'll replace sanitary sewer laterals, if they're anything other than Schedule 26 plastic. So if it's heavy-duty plastic, we'll just hook it on and you'll be taken off the special assessment role, but if not, we'll just charge for what was put in the ground. This one was bid out a little bit differently, although this is zero for the Y and a zero for the cleanout. Those prices were all inclusive to the six-inch service pipe, so those prices were built into that. Notice that these prices are a little more increased than the previous slides. A couple of reasons for that, because there's not, there really aren't too many laterals on this project we're anticipating, but the real big one is this thing, this pipe is very deep. There are spots that are probably between 15 and 20 foot deep, and probably 12 to 14 feet of that would be underwater. So it's going to be very slow going. It's a very expensive project to do this. It kind of follows the area of the county drain there, so it explains why the county drain is in, but that explains the significantly higher cost of this. But it is still a good price if you had a contractor coming to do it. I don't know of any of them in the area that can actually replace these if you did have an issue. So it's a good time to do it while we're doing the entire main, because like I mentioned, when we're down that deep with water, the hole's going to get very big very quickly. So it's a good time to deal with it all together. The city will pay it half and the property owner will pay the other half of anything that we're replacing around. And these are the health, the properties that we've identified that could potentially be affected by those.
Everybody have questions? Any members of the public have questions? One thing comes to mind, and I'm not an engineer by any sort of imagination, but when you start talking about going that deep for the, did they look at, would it make sense to put a lift station in and raise that so you're not going quite so deep on the project? Because of the whole groundwater and everything that's there?
That's a possibility. Lift stations are extremely expensive. You're going to look at about $1.5 to $2 million probably to build one in that area. Number two is it's additional equipment to maintain, to, to have to take care of, long-term legacy costs. And it is possible to put this in and do grabby feed. So if at all possible, we like to do these things as grabby lines. So we'll replace what's there, but we are lowering it about two foot up near the Pine Avenue area to get rid of that low spot. So we're putting this as physically low as we can in the ground, because this is one of the main lines, artery lines that come right into wastewater treatment plant. There's three of them. This is one of them. And you have to keep this as low as you can get it, just because you want the entire region to grabby feed into this. So it's one of the reasons why we're happy to keep this so low.
Any questions? Somebody else? Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. Thomas McCurry. I own property on 418 Chatterton, a rental home. I can't hear what he's saying. Does that microphone work or?
I believe it does. I don't know if it goes just through the camera. It should be working, but.
It's more so just for this.
How are property owners affected by what you're saying?
Okay. Property owners will be affected by the construction project, but with, as far as, I'll keep it to the SAD, what will happen is if your sanitary sewer lateral is anything other than plastic, we'll replace it, the city will replace this as a part of the project, and the property owner of the lateral that we replaced, which is your sanitary sewer pipe, that portion that we replaced, the property owner will pay half of that cost, and the city will pay the other half of that cost for the replacement.
Let's say I've already done this. When I bought the property 30-some years ago, it was a vacant building, it didn't have city water, didn't have natural gas, didn't have a good sewer. I did all of that, from the home to the sanitary sewer out in the middle of the street.
If that was replaced with plastic, I'm gonna try to speak clearer, if that was replaced with plastic, Schedule 26 or above, or heavier plastic?
Butcher did it for me.
Okay. If that was replaced with plastic, we'll just hook on, and you won't get a bill, if that's the case.
I like the sound of that. You don't wanna have to do it over again.
Kind of the answer I'd like to give, so hopefully that's the case, and hopefully there's a majority of those who are under to like that.
So do you have to run cameras?
We tried, it's too full of sanitary material to even find the laterals, so that's another reason why it's gonna be slow-going, to try to find, normally we would camera it to know where the laterals were at, but this one we can't, because it's so full of material, we can't see anything, so as we're digging, we might be knocking on a lot of doors, that question.
And whatever, so it'll be very easy on my property. I'm not sure about anybody around me, but.
If you've got a clean-out, that's nice, and we'll probably ask that, we'll have a pre-construction meeting. If you know any of that stuff, let us know, because it makes life substantially easier.
Any more questions from the public? Hearing none, we intend to motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Support.
Last chance for comments and questions, all those in favor say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Any opposed say no, and we have closed the hearing. Next, we are to consider a resolution to authorize the north of Washington Sanitary Sewer Leeds Construction Project to establish the number of annual installment payments allowed and approve the special assessment district as presented. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
We have, what timeframe?
Five years.
Five years timeframe, so more so 1%.
1% above the planning treasury.
Yes, there you go.
I'm sure that's what Sarah heard you say.
Support.
Got it, motion support, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed or be no, motion is carried, thank you. Moving on down, recommendation of bids. We are to consider a resolution to receive bids on the north of Washington Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Project and award the contract to the recommended bidder, if you so inclined. Also to approve the corresponding request for purchase and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the related agreements, and the following bids will receive on March 28, 2023. The recommended bidder is Crawford Contracting Incorporated of Mount Pleasant at $2.1 million and some change. And then the second bid, and the only other bid we got, we received, was from Wards Excavating LLC of St. Louis, Michigan, and that was $2.3 million and some change. Your pleasure.
Move to approve Crawford Contracting.
Support.
Motion support, does anybody have any comments or questions?
This is the project we just got to talking about, the laterals. Again, this will be a two-year project, so this is, it's gonna be with us for a while. It's important, obviously, as we've also discussed, this has to be done before we do Pine Avenue reconstruction, Pine Avenue, so. It's important to do, and also just wanted to make note to the commission also, we have a lot of construction projects this year with the neighborhood streets, this one, and with our staffing and the number of projects, and this is, like Dave mentioned, is a very complex project. We're looking to get some numbers from Row Oversight of the project. We're hoping, we would like to have them before we do this, but depending on who the contractor is, the engineers typically like to know who the contractor is gonna, the contractor that went through this, because that sometimes affects how much time you have to put into it. So probably in the next couple of weeks, maybe at the next meeting, we'll have a proposal to bring before you for oversight of the project and the construction side of things. Dave, did Wards or Crawford, did they give explanation why their quotes weren't necessarily linear from project to project? Is it the depth, is it the scale of which Wards couldn't handle the first one? I'm just confused, you typically, when you bid something out, you're gonna be bidding on footage, and it seems like if you're cheaper in one, you're gonna be cheaper in the other. Is it just the size of the project, Wards didn't think they could handle it, or did we have a conversation with them, why? See what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I did not have a conversation specifically about it, because I can answer the majority of the questions. A lot of that depends on a couple things. This one depends on the region where they're working, the depths. This was the water table where they're working at, so that vastly affects their prices. If you're looking at apples to apples as far as to, like the Harvard contract, you look at that one. This one's substantially more, because the conditions in which they're working, timeline they have, and that's the reason for it. And the other, the Harvard project, I call that more of a typical street construction project. We don't anticipate it having groundwater based on our soil bores, it's pretty firm clay. They don't have to go across country with laterals or anything of that nature. It's as far as a street project, I don't wanna jinx myself, Bruce status quo, so the prices are definitely lower on that.
Does it benefit us having two separate bidders in terms of the speed in which they can finish the work?
Two, I'm following two separate ones for this.
For the two different projects, I would assume since they could basically be working at the same time, instead of trying to be splitting their time between two projects?
No, not with this, because it's also dependent on what other work they have lined up. From what I understand of Crawford, they're busy this year, that pretty well finishes off their plate for bidding work until the fall. And Wards, they tried to bid on this one, they got Harvard. I don't think you're getting any kind of a package deal on or anything of that nature. It just depends on what they've got going, what other projects line up in their timelines. So it's good questions.
Do you hear a voice, really? Pardon me? Yeah, okay. So anybody else have questions?
Yeah, here's a follow-up, just one way to explain it if that was confusing. If you're building a house, if you're remodeling it, it's cheaper typically to build a new house than it would be to remodel an old, bad one, so if you have an existing house, it's in bad shape, it's gonna cost more. Look at the area north of Washington Avenue, it's not as desirable simply because of the conditions, so it's a higher price, you're gonna have higher labor costs, just because a lot of unknowns, so that's another way to look at it, too.
And unfortunately, the other thing we're experiencing right now, and I'm sure you're seeing it too, Dave, is there's a lot of money chasing projects in today's environment, and there just aren't that many contractors, there's not that much equipment, there's not that much labor in the marketplace right now. You know, Michigan passed their fix-the-roads money, we've had all kinds of COVID money stuffed into the system, and municipalities across the state are, got all these projects backed up that nobody's addressed for the last 40 years. Everybody's got tons of work, and there's very few firms out there that can do it. So there's a lot of money chasing a lot of projects, but not much resource, supply and demand. The firms that are doing this type of work are in the caper seats.
Yes.
And will be for quite some time, because there are deadlines with all the money that's been stuffed into the system, so everybody's now in a rush to spend all this money, as it's coming to fruition for us, available for municipalities and the state as a whole. It's just gonna continue to raise the prices and drive inflation while we spend it all, so I think we're gonna see this continue.
For the next several years, but you have, there's.
It would really be beneficial if your legislators, if you haven't talked to them, if they would slow some of the timelines down and let the firms ramp up for this. You know, even if a firm had, you know, all this money has to be spent in the next five, 10 years, if you spread it over 20, it might make more sense to get more people to invest in, build firms and build larger firms and buy more equipment, they know it's gonna be put to use for 20 years instead of over 50 years, so. It is what it is, we're grateful for the money we're getting, but it's just going up the cost and you don't wind up getting any more for it at the end of the day, so. So with that, give everybody a last chance to talk. Hearing nothing, so all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried, thank you. Number two, consideration of a resolution to receive bids for the 2021 CIP Harvard Avenue Reconstruction Project and award the contract to the recommended bidder. Also approve a corresponding request for purchase and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the related agreement. The following bids were received on April 6, 2023. We have bids from Wards Excavating LLC of St. Louis of $960,000 and some change. Crawford Contracting of Mount Pleasant of $1.1 million and some change. McGurk St. and Gravel of Mount Pleasant of $1.99 million and some change. Your pleasure.
Move to approve Ward Excavating.
Support.
Motion support, any comments or questions? Any background coming?
No, we're just happy to see a project under $1 million. This is, seriously, it's, the, just as some background, the street surface itself was a higher than normal bid that we normally would see, but the numbers for our water and sewer, comparatively what we've been seeing, because of the other projects that we've received recently, those were a little bit lower, surprisingly, so that's why we've seen a little bit of a discount, I guess you'd call it nowadays, for this project, so we're excited to get this one, because this one was down in our books for over three years. COVID shut that down, so we're finally getting to it.
Just curious, the last time we did a two-block street similar to Harvard, what did it cost, any idea?
You're really jacking my memory now, I apologize, I don't have.
No, I know, that's out of the blue, it's just, and you don't need to be real angry.
For context for what Eric said, water and sewer were very much close to budget numbers, so that was a pleasant surprise to see on it, but what we're seeing is doing exactly what the mayor said, and part of it is also labor costs are going up, and when we bid these, you can see where some of the costs are shifted, and it's places where they can, you know, get extra money for the work, so. This was refreshing, at least to see some of the numbers on this project. But we're very thankful for all the bids we got, because as we mentioned, there's a lot of work out there, so.
Any more comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried, and we've got another project going. We're moving on to resolutions, we'll consider a proposed resolution for claiming April 28, 2023 as Arbor Day in the city of Elma. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Motion support, have any questions, background?
We do, we do whatever, we do, oh gosh, we're a tree city USA, for this, last year was 38, so we've been doing Arbor Day at least that way.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed or be no, motion is carried, and we have an Arbor Day coming up. Next, we are considering a resolution declaring not just weeds a public hazard and nuisance pursuant to Section 22-62 and 22-63 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Elma, and that all of the affected property owners be notified to abate such nuisances. Your pleasure.
Move approval.
Support. Motion support, anything comments?
Just the requirement that each year that all homeowners, property owners, keep their lawns under 10 inches. This particular ordinance allows us to, if that doesn't happen, that we are able to make notice and then send the contractor to mow the lawn, charge the service fee and the cost of the mowing, and then if that's not paid, to put it on a special assessment role at the end of the year, so that helps us, allows us to do that, so. Is that timely, Eric?
I have a semi-related, I mean, I'm all in favor of the not just weeds and the ordinances. I had someone approach me about a house that is empty, the owners have died, and apparently family members came and dumped garbage bags in the front yard, and it's just sitting there, and they called. They said they called, the neighbors had called City Hall, and they were told there was nothing they could do about that, and so I'm wondering if we're if there's a, I didn't know how to answer that, because I thought that we had.
Let me know, get me after the meeting and.
Okay. So there was a misunderstanding.
Yes, we'll get that figured.
We do care about that.
And we do have a process, right?
Yes, oh yes. That one I can definitely do something, but if it's piles of, yes.
That's what I was meant, I did not drive by it yet to see myself, but that's.
Nope, we'll talk afterwards.
Perfect, thank you, that's all I had, thank you.
Anybody else have questions or comments? I have, is our program, if I remember correctly, a few years ago, we changed the program, we don't re-mail new notices for repeating offenses. And a long time ago, we used to, you know, your grants, we get 10, 12 inches high, give you a notice, you get a chance to fix it, and then we go and mow. Now, if it's high the second time, we just go mow, you don't get a second notice, you just get fined and you get mowing.
That's correct.
Okay, so that has expedited the process.
Yes, and obviously we have, for the most part, probably maybe only 12%, you know, to 15% are those types of issues that they, they, they're, every year, you kind of send them a letter even. But then nowadays, though, with our new policy, they get the one letter, and that's it, after that, it gets to 10 inches.
The foreword.
The foreword, yes.
Very good. Anybody else, last chance, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, thank you. And I guess one more thing while I'm thinking of it, too. Well, everybody is mowing their lawns, because everybody's going to do it now, they don't want the city to do it for them, because I'm sure it's more expensive when the city does it. But also, if, we could remind everybody, when you mow your lawn, don't mow the clippings into the street, which then winds up in the sewer system, which Dave and his crew have to go clean out, and costs us all more time and money, and it doesn't really do anybody any good, so. If you just mow your clippings back onto your yard where they can refurbish your yard, and everybody will be happy, so, thank you. And have a good night.
Have a good night.
Absolutely, sir, thank you for joining us tonight for answering my questions on Chatterton.
Have a good night.
Thank you. We'll move on down to reports of officers, boards, and committees. The commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. Tonight, we have the Elma Transit, March 2023 report, the Board of Review meeting minutes, action report and summary, the Planning Commission draft minutes of April 3, 2023, the Elma Police Department, March 2023 report, the finance report, and the city manager's newsletter. Your pleasure.
Will we receive 1 through 5 reports?
Do we want a full finance?
No, definitely not.
That's up to you.
We have budget presentation.
Oh, that's right. Nevermind, yep.
Okay, the motion support for 1 through 5. Last chance for comments or questions, hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no, we have received five reports. Now, your pleasure on number 6, the city manager's newsletter.
Will we receive the city manager's newsletter?
The motion support, any comments or questions?
All right, here we go, um, yeah. We're having the biggest conversation tonight, for at least for the newsletter. Well, a couple things, well, the biggest one for the citizens themselves, that'll directly affect them, we discussed it last month, our last meeting, with water and sewer, ready-to-serve rates, and low water and sewer usage rates.
Any chance we can put this up on the screen, or do we not have it?
We do have it.
Because I don't think the public got it, possibly, too, really.
It should be my newsletter.
I got it.
All right, thank you very much.
So what we, our effort, a lengthy discussion last meeting, and taking in the input of, you know, balancing the funds that we need to keep our neighborhood street projects going, and set ourselves up for our capital projects that need to be done, including the ones that we've been talking about here tonight. We went back and revised and provided two options. The comments that remain seem to be around, yep, we need to kind of front-load some of this, and then find a way, and also provides, maybe spreading this out a little bit where we can. So that's what we tried to do in these two revised options. The assumptions that we have for these two options are similar to what we talked about last time. It still is a typical family of four, using 4,500 gallons of water and sewer each month, and the dollars, we're assuming, we're assuming those folks will continue to use the same amount of water and sewer, obviously the amount of money generated to pay for our projects. Second, the capital projects in these funds will require above and beyond what we just recently approved, low-interest loans or bonds, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And these rates that we're proposing here, and these two revised options, would cover those payments to those. And then lastly, we had three options last, we last meeting, and one of them didn't have depreciation. These two do factor in depreciation, so that was one of the, the commission wanted to make sure that we had. And we also went back and evaluated with the recent bids that we've had, and talked about municipalities, what projects are costing, so we have revised our numbers on what's gonna cost us to replace some of these capital items. Under the ready-to-serve water, option one, basically upfronts in the first year, the cost that we need in that fund for the five-year period. Option two, spreads that, instead of just doing it on one in the first year, spreads it out over the two years. So as you see, the first year in that particular option, instead of being $23.30 for the first year increase, it'd be $15.30, and then in the second year, 2015, it'd be $10.50. But then going forward for the following three years after, after that, there would be an increase needed to cover the ready-to-serve side of things and the capitals. Like we mentioned, we did reevaluate the costs of the projected products that we need over this five-year period in the water fund. After looking at that plus, including the depreciation, over the next five years, we're looking at $6,242,224 needed. Option one is projected to generate for us $6,300,000, and option two is projected to generate us $6,372,000 over the next five years. It's a little bit of a overage, but not much, but again, that's assuming that people keep using the water at the same rate, and that's even with the increases in, that we've added to the capital budget, that it doesn't increase beyond what we've added to it already. The water usage rate, this, just to let folks know, the our ready-to-serve fee is how we pay for capital improvements. Now, then you had on your bill a water rate, usage rate, which pays for the actual water itself. That pays for the water that we purchased from the Gracier Water Authority that we have at St. Louis. It's our staffing, distribution maintenance, if there's a water main break, that would take care of that at that time, and then the utilities. As we discussed in some of our other meetings, as we get ready for a budget, if we did no increase to this rate, our projected shortfall would be close to $500,000 in this budget, there in this line. To have a balanced budget in the first year, we would need to increase the rate to a dollar, by a dollar eighty per thousand gallons, and from which, if we wanted to do that in the first year, balancing. the first year, balancing the budget, that would cost the average family of four an extra two dollars and twenty cents per month. After that, you would need to increase the rates at five percent a year to keep up with the inflation and costs of the water coming from Godwin. In order to give the rate payers a little bit of a break in those first two years, staff is proposing in both options that we increase the water rate to a dollar thirty-one in the first year and in the second year, sixty cents. And then it'd be a five percent increase in years three through five. Based on those projections, we would still have a shortfall, but our shortfall would be a hundred twenty-five thousand in the first year, and that would be covered by our current water fund balance. And then the shortfall in the second year would be twenty-five thousand, and that would come out of the water balance. But by year three, we would be balanced. And then from there on out, as long as we kept five percent increases per year, then we continue to keep balanced. The reason we threw that in there as part of that discussion on our last meeting was to try to spread some of this out to, you know, best we can for the rate payers. And that's one way we could use some fund balance that we don't have a lot of it, but we can get there in three years instead of all at once. The wastewater, ready-to-serve, again, this works on capital needed for the system. We gave, again, two different options. One, that the cost, or the cost would be borne on the front very first year, and that'd be twelve dollars and eighty-four cents in that first year. And in option two, we spread that ready-to-serve fee over the first two years as opposed to the one. So the first year would be at five dollars and eighty-four cents, and the sewer in the second year would be seven dollars and fifty cents. And there wouldn't be any increases in the ready-to-serve for the following three years. Underneath the capital here, after looking at those of the projects we talked about, we anticipate the need for the next five-year projects is six million, four hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred seventy-four. Option one would generate for us six million, six hundred sixty thousand, and option two would generate us six million, four hundred eighty thousand over the next five years. Again, this gives us a little bit of minimal overage. And again, based on, as long as the water usage and sewer usage stays the same, and that the increases that we added to this aren't more than what we have an increased by. The wastewater usage rate, we're projecting actually a cushion in this one. And like we discussed before, the reason why we do have a little bit of cushion in this is that we had a project done a few years ago out at the wastewater plant that we raised rates. So that one actually has kept up with things, much better shape than what our water. So we're projecting that in our upcoming budget year, FY24, that we'll have a cushion close to thirty-five thousand. And then looking into FY25, even with inflationary costs, we project the budgets to show at balanced. So with that, we're recommending that we don't do, no rate increases in year one or two for the wastewater usage rate. And then in year three, start that, increasing that in the revised options. So in year 2026, your sewer rate would increase by thirty-six cents, or thirty-nine cents under option one, and thirty-nine cents again under option two. But again, trying to minimize some of the increases, so it's not so much on the front of the things. Solid waste, from the yard waste side of things, in revised options one and two, we are recommending that we don't touch any increases in that fund until year four. So we'll give a three-year break of increasing that. We're not covering, we're not balancing by doing that, but we do have a fund balance in yard waste of four hundred seventy thousand, and that is approximately a hundred twenty-five percent of our annual operating cost of the program. Typically, you want to keep your fund balance around a hundred percent of what our operating costs are. So we do have some little room here not to increase the cost for that time period. So we're recommending that we use some of that fund balance. And then we're looking at probably when we hit that hundred percent mark of operating cost in FY27 or FY28, and then we would recommend to start to increase rates in year four and five. So if we're to look at year four and five, which is twenty-seven, twenty-eight, under option one, the solid waste, which is yard waste, two dollars per buy-side increase. And again, that would be under option two. But in 2018, FY2018, twenty-eight, gosh, going back in time, it wouldn't be this expensive. Yard waste, it goes sixty-four cents in each of those options. So again, trying to find a way to spread some of them out where we can, use some fund balance. Even though we're not balancing, we do get balanced within that five-year time period. Solid waste, which trash recycling, that contract is currently reviving with Ranger through 2027. Underneath that contract, that contract increases five percent a year. So that one is reflected. We don't have a choice in that one. So that one will increase five percent for the rest of that contract, and it covers our waste recycling every week and one large item per week. So with that all said, what we're projecting in both these options for the commission will cover what staff sees as our needs for the capital and water and wastewater in the five years, including what we're currently doing with our Neighbor Street program and the other sewer project that we approved tonight. We, under the water sewer, water rates, going with option two, spreading them out, we do get to a balanced budget by year 2026, which is huge considering where we're currently at and where we have been. Again, allowing for some breathing room for some rate increases. Both of our options keep us balanced with the wastewater operations. Either option keeps the trash recycling balanced because that's just a contract with Ranger. And the options for the yard waste, we will not balance for a few years, but we do have that healthy fund balance. So that makes sense to use some of that fund balance to give a break for the overall bill that will come in monthly for the residents. So we're hoping that that helps, you know, commission make it a little easier to digest. These are both definitely what we looked at two weeks ago. But I think when you look at our other neighboring municipalities and what they're having to do also with increases, over a five-year period, we're looking at a total increase per bill under option one of sixty-one dollars and eight cents, under option two, sixty-three dollars and fifty-three cents over that five-year period with all those lines. So I think it's, as best we could do is still keep projects moving forward. And like we discussed tonight, the things that are being repaired and replaced, they can't be put off anymore. They have been put off, like the mayor said, some cases, twenty, thirty, forty years. So that should have been done, so.
Didn't we discuss last time that these rates haven't been changed?
Water, we have not touched since 2011. And sewer, we did last time, it was 2016.
Any comments or questions? Who has the first call, any comments or questions?
I got a question for, probably for Dave. Does this, does the difference between option one and two, does that put you at a disadvantage in terms of bidding things out versus having the upfront costs versus the two-year period in terms of locking in contractors, locking in the work? If it's a two-year span, or is it, are we able to get those bids and cure those bids in, under either option?
I'm gonna ask Curtis a little bit of help because we talked about that a number of times. But as far as, I mean, I guess you're probably more up here than the head camera, but...
Tattoo.
From my standpoint, it doesn't significantly change anything as far as being able to do projects, but there's a number of them based on out of our control. SRF is what we're really actively going after USDA levels. We're very dependent on those. Anything that gets us a little bit more money in the longer term is what I'm going to be after because exactly what the mayor said about a half hour ago, prices are going to continually going up. So anything that helps us to go in those, be better positioned for those. And as far as grant opportunities, there are likely going to be match funds too. So we factored both of those in with these. One was just a little more palatable over the long term, but the end goal is they still get us to where we need to be.
Yeah, it won't really affect our ability to do contracts at the timing of contracts. It'll just, mostly because the timing of payments, by the time we actually will have the work done, we'll have enough money. The only thing is with option two, we will see probably our fund balance at some point will be lower than what we normally would say we're comfortable with. We'll probably dip below that hundred percent of operation cost until it gets built back up. Or in option one, we'll get a little more flexibility to see if it's necessarily going to increase. But nope, we would be able to do all of the projects in both scenarios during, on the same schedule.
Without putting you on the spot, do you have a recommendation for what option do you prefer?
Not without putting you on the spot.
Honestly, they both work. From a finance side, I'm always going to say, the sooner we have it, the better. It's gonna, I mean, that gives us a little more comfortability. That, obviously, we didn't build in of, knock on wood, something goes wrong, something that's not planned, a water main that we don't plan on touching breaks, and it's a huge liability, anything like that. So the more we have it, the sooner we get it, the more we have in fund balance to kind of cover our rainy day fund. But either option would work. So it's really a pick-your, pick-your battle. But from a finance, you're asking Curtis, the finance director, option one, get the money sooner, makes me feel more comfortable when we're approving these two projects. So, but either one would work and I would be happy to sign up in either one. So, thank you.
More questions? I guess I would like to say thank you to Curtis, Eric, and Dave. I don't know who worked on this, but a lot of detail went into all this. And I really want to express that we appreciate that. There was, you know, from where we started talking about this stuff, I think we're...
This is exactly what we asked.
A lot more depth here than what we've seen in the past. So thank you to the team for putting this all together. And I think we're going to wind up in a better place. I know we're going to wind up in a better place over the next few years. You know, even if things do, some things do go south on us, which surely will, just a bonus to you. But I have a lot more confidence that we're, we know we're heading in a good direction and we have confidence that we're going to make it better with either of these options. So thank you to the team for putting that together. Appreciate it.
And then kind of duck tailing into that, for the capital projects, Dave and Curtis did mention the SRF, which is state revolving loans and then the USDA program. Those programs will be submitted in October for. And this is, a lot of these projects are really contingent on if we can get these fundings, these loans through either or the projects, or either of these programs. Because without those, talk about front loading, it doesn't matter how much front loading we'll do, we'll never be able to afford it unless we have these loans. We just can't be able to do it. We've been given pretty good assurances on USDA, that as long as we apply for it, that's, that one will, that one should be good. But the state revolving fund is a little more competitive. So we're applying for both, and that will be in October. So we'll be applying public hearings here in August to September for those applications to go in. So.
And for the scoring on those, how much benefit would it be if we front loaded it as, Dan was talking about, we front loaded it the first year versus stretch in two? Is there...
I don't believe there's any benefit, scoring for that, because as long as we show them plan that, where we're putting our rates, they're, we're able to apply. So...
But yet we're still, our rates are still, even with all this huge increase, which this is a massive increase for our rate payers, we're still not to the level where we're going to be eligible for grant funding, right?
Well, we'll be eligible to apply for it. It's just, it's...
But what we've seen in the past is, because our rates are so low, we don't qualify for grant funding.
Yes. Last year, before our twenty percent increase in our water usage rate, which was only, you know, a few cents, I mean, twenty percent sounds a lot, but it, and it's still a lot, our, we were not at the level that they required us to be for our rate for water usage to even apply. So last year was the first year when we raised those rates that put us in the running to actually at least be able to apply for the USDA. So... But now, there's just no, there's no choice now. There's just two things that have to be done.
Is it just, they just look at water rates, or do they look at the ready-to-serve?
Both. They look at both, yes. But our water rate was keeping us out of all the running for USDA before.
When do we need to make a decision on?
Well, right now, what we got programmed into the budget that we had tonight, the proposed budget, is option one. It's what's programmed in there right now. But listening to the commission, the last meeting, of trying to, if there's a possible way of spreading out the pain, I guess you'd say, of the increases, that you'd like to see something. But that's why we provided the other options. So...
It's really a question of, do you rip the Band-Aid off and do it all in one year? Or do you make it painful for two full years? I guess there's not a good answer either way. So...
Well, right now, like Curtis and Dave said, both of those balance us. So whoever we choose to go with, after you hear the budget, the proposed budget tonight, we have a meeting between the four, we have the public hearing for the budget, and then we adopt the budget the second meeting in May. So we have time for you to kind of think about that. It'd be a long later, obviously, but... But either one will work, and what we have in there now is option one. The last thing I wanted to cover here in the newsletter is the Michigan Class Investments. Michigan Class is a government investment to a pool that is part of our city's portfolio. It's based on a daily investment from the pool into, you know, they have a series of stocks that they involve themselves with, that they invest of pool of money from all different municipalities across the state of Michigan. When you look at the net asset value, and they have that set at a dollar, so each day, it will show you either a dollar or something just below a dollar typically. And what that's, what that means is that the net asset value of a dollar means that your principal investment maintains its value. So as long as it's one, whatever you have invested there is one. It's completely there. If the NAV dips below one dollar, that dollar, then your principal is at risk. So my list is brought up as a closing on Thursday this last week, the NAV in this investment pool was at point nine 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 eight five four. Now, it sounds ridiculous to have to read that aloud, but it's very important as you, as you look at this pool fund, which marked the third consecutive day that was below the dollar. Curtis and his staff reviewed the daily trends in this Michigan class market going back to January one of 2018. And during that period of time, the fund closed at one, below one, seven hundred seventy-seven days during that time period, closed exactly one for only six days. So it's, obviously, it's real hard to hit that exact one mark there. And closed above the one-dollar amount at one thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven days. The lowest point during this time period, meaning from January one, 2018 till now, closed at point nine 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 zero eight four on 11/6 of 2022. Also for reference, because we're talking about a period of time where it did rule at one for a few days, during, for reference, the funds had a stretch of two hundred and seven consecutive days below the dollar back between late 2018 and early 2019. During this period, the lowest rate was point nine nine seven, seventy-seven. And just for letting the commission know and the public know how much we had invested in the class, we currently have sixteen million, eight hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred thirty-one invested in it as of April 6. What's great about this particular fund, especially right now, it does pay a very competitive rate. It's a daily investment. Each day, the pool invests whatever you have in it each day, and it pulls it out, pays that amount for the interest. Say, one day you say at sixteen million, you wanted to invest, you know, take it, invest it in some CDs or something, twenty-four hours notice to the fund that you'd like to withdraw X number of dollars, and then you put in something else, it's a twenty-four-hour period to draw. So it's very liquid. So it's very liquid. But we wanted to bring that up and talk about it a little bit because it is part of our investment portfolio, but if the commission is looking at this and said, hey, maybe we should modify or look at our investment policy or having any time it drops below one for X number of days, it doesn't provide the comfort level that you'd like to have, then we could take a look at that and evaluate of how much we put toward this particular fund and that we'll just look at other options, CD or CDs or CDs. So just want to provide that information.
Okay. Anybody have questions? I guess I did, I kind of brought this up earlier, a little concerned about, especially the volume of dollars that we have parked in that fund right now. Sixteen million is a pretty big number for us. You know, a little concerned about the volume market, obviously, you know, we've seen some activity that has been less than pleasant in the financial sector, so to speak, in the last month or so. And just wonder if we should have that much money parked in this fund at any single time. Another thing that came to my mind is, well, Curtis, and you've done a better job of reporting and giving us information, so I appreciate that, but I also question, are we perhaps on the best programs with our local financial institutions that are, that are serving our needs or giving us our financial products? There may be some room to enhance your yield from that group and invest the money locally, which is one of the, another challenge I have with that M-class fund is that's invested across the globe. It's not, it's not, while they call it Michigan class, their money goes everywhere. It doesn't just invest in Michigan, it invests, you know, this money's going through Wall Street. I'm not the biggest fan of Wall Street, but, so if we can keep it with local institutions and where we can put that way, I, that's, my own personal preference is to keep money locally invested ourselves. But just the sheer volume of dollars we got there made me uncomfortable. I just wanted to see if everybody else would be able to share that, so.
We've held that M-class for several years, right? And we went over this before.
Yeah, yes. But it's something you should always review and talk about, so.
I think it's worth taking a look at and maybe a better way to do that is going to be safer because as you mentioned, it can be very volatile and all of a sudden very volatile too.
Yeah, there is event risk with anything like that because it's not, you know, it's not FDIC program, it's a Wall Street program. And so that's, I guess, another reason to bring it up and talk about is just to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on and what's, what's happening. If there's the event that happens, this is the board that's going to answer for it, so.
No, we'll take a look at some things then and bring back some other options too. And as, once we get past the budget, we can maybe dive into it a little more deeper and look at some other options to look at other possible ways to invest from the standpoint of who's helping us in the end, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And that's all I really wanted to cover is we're going to have a proposed budget come back, so.
Okay. Anybody else comments, question, last chance? All those in favor of receiving the city manager's report, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion's carried, we have a report. Thank you. Moving down, presentation by the friends of, the Alma friends of the library regarding National Library Month and the upcoming open house. Something I think people have been waiting for, so.
I'm sure you see.
And a motion to receive, is there support?
Support.
And motion to support, and it looks like we even have a speaker, so welcome.
It's just a brief interlute of non-finance talk. I'm Susan Hunter, I'm with the Alma Library Friends and thanks for putting this on the agenda. April is National Library Month and you may have seen some of the signs around town saying you love our library and you really do. And I'm just going to give you a few reasons why and talk to you about a special event that we're having over this month. Some of you may have kids or grandkids who participate in Lego Club or go to Storytime or teen book club at the library. Maybe your family goes to family movie night or trivia night, or maybe you just go grab a cup of coffee, read the newspaper and argue with your friends about what's wrong in the world and how you would fix it if you were in charge. There's quite a bit of that that goes on at the library. If you're enjoying the outdoor walk on the River Walk, as I do, you'll have seen Story Walk, which begins in, I was going to say Conservation Park, Pine River Park. Some of us longtime Alma friends, you know, it takes more than 40 years to get used to this new terminology. So it starts at Pine River Park and goes to the library and has 20 different stations. Each of them has a two-page spread from an illustrated children's book and you stop with your kids and you read it and then you walk a little farther and you read the next and then you come to the conclusion of the story at the library. It's a really fun event for kids, it's fun for adults too. When I've hit the River Walk, I always see what stories I'm reading on my way. Everybody knows that our library has books, of course, but some people don't realize you can check out audiobooks, ebooks, CDs, DVDs, and in fact, we have had over 53,000 items checked out last year, which is a lot for a community our size. So many of us have easy access to internet at home or at work that we forget that there are still quite a few people in the area who don't. So the library provides free internet access and also wifi hotspots, which are like a mobile device you can hook up to your mobile phone or your iPad or whatever and get connection to the internet. The Alma Library is happy to have you visit, but if you don't come to the library, it will come to you at local school classroom visits, senior center visits, and in fact, in the summer, there is even a Storytime outdoors at the farm market. Meeting rooms in the library are really popular spots. In fact, they were booked over 500 times last year. It's really no wonder because even though the library has only four full-time staff and a handful of very dedicated student workers, they have made the library such a warm and welcoming place to be. So welcoming, in fact, that the people counter at the door clocked over 65,000 unique visits last year. And all those visits generate other visits in town and I think we should remember that because say mom or dad drops the kids off at chess club or Lego club or whatever, then they go and run errands and they buy something downtown or they get their hair cut or get a massage or walk down to see what's going on at the community theater or the arts center. And the visits to the library radiate out throughout the community and encourage visits to other places and I, and we feel like the library is an important link in bringing our community together. During National Library Week, we're hosting an open house, excuse me, on Wednesday, April 26th, from 3:30 to 6:00 PM to celebrate our library. Everyone is invited, but the library friends especially wanted to invite the city commission and we have special invitations for you all. I have papers for you, but they're not the kind of papers you get sometimes. You'll see that there's a brochure with your invitation and that's also something that the library friends put together for National Library Month, just to give people an idea of the things that they can find and do at the library. And one other thing that we did for National Library Month was collect signatures on a statement of appreciation for the library. And I would like to present these to our library director, Lori Taylor, and our library board president, Pete Tayshia, if you guys would just come up for just a second and let me see what it says. April is National Library Month. To celebrate it, we want to formally recognize our Alma Public Library for the amazing community resource it is and to express our appreciation to the Alma City Commission for its ongoing efforts to support this vital service. So thank you very much, Lori or Pete. No fight over it. Now, we have, there are, we got hundreds of signatures and I really think we could have gotten thousands if we'd started earlier. It was amazing. I don't know if you've ever collected signatures for petition drive or something, it's not very easy. But all we had to say was, would you like to say that you support the library? And yeah, we got the signatures. Thank you both so very much. And we are very, very proud of the library and we thank the city commission for its support and hope that you're proud too. And then I just want to invite everyone, not just the, not just the VIPs of the city, everybody is welcome. And we're going to have a really, a really good fun event. There's, we've had so much support from local merchants and from the library volunteers themselves. We're going to have an in-library scavenger hunt for kids and adults. We've got really nice prizes. We've got families gift baskets. We've got a history tour by our own library director, Emeritus, Ron Dinwiddie, and a lot more things. I hope that you'll all come. It's going to be a really fun event and I say that as an introvert who doesn't ever have fun at big parties, but I'm really looking forward to this one and I hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just, I just wanted to thank Susan. Actually, we've had about 30 to 40 people at the last several friends groups meetings. And honestly, I think we're still trying to get our footing or, you know, the friends group's trying to get their footing because we don't truly have a full board yet. We have a couple of people who are here tonight for the first time, so I'm very excited for the group. Thank you, Susan. Before you run away, Dr. Tayshia, is, are the meetings open to the public and when would somebody want to appear if they wanted to join your group?
Oh, if you want to join our group, look on the back of your brochure and there's a form right there or you can scan in the Q code and you will be.
I don't know if the microphone picked that up or not. Would it have been on your website for tips? If somebody was, if somebody's listening to it.
We are, I am not part of the group, but I can honestly, oh, I, of course I'm part of the group. But let me put it.
You voted to out last.
Yeah. Let me put it this way, we, Susan has been very instrumental in getting this group going and she's done a lot of work. The group has actually just grown organically up till now. I know we're having the open house. When you get to the open house, I know you can definitely sign up and get on the email list. One thing we haven't completely done is organize the group. We don't even have regular days for the meetings. So basically it's, we send out a mass, or Susan sends out a mass email and says, we're going to have a meet on Wednesday night, we need you here, 30 before you come. And then even the people who aren't there learn about, you know, what they need to do. So there's a lot of volunteers at the library, at the open house. There's a couple of events in the fall that are already being planned. And you have a very good question. I think we would have even more members if we get more, as we get more organized.
Well, congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate the information. It sounds like there's an opportunity for people to get out on the ground floor of this as it's.
The ground floor is beginning to form here, so.
Good. And thank you to everybody that volunteers. It is a wonderful program. We are very proud of the library and staff and everybody that's involved, so it is a great asset to contribute about that. Okay, we had a motion on the table. Are there any more comments or questions? Or none? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion's carried and we received your report. Thank you. Next up is consideration of resolution, ratifying the investment of the following city funds. And we had an investment on 4/7, 4/7 months, $250,000 at Commercial Bank CD at the rate of 4.25%. Your pleasure. Motion's for it. Comes to questions? Or none? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion's carried. Thank you. Next up, we'll obtain a receipt of a presentation for the fiscal year 2024 annual city budget. I presume this is just part of it. And I'm sure I can link you before leaving. Curtis, don't take it personally.
We all know that Pete's the rock star, so the problem with him's always the self-accomplishment. We'll figure it out, so.
Thank you.
We got a motion on the table to, we have support. And motion supports receipt and report.
All right, so I know, just kind of before we get too into this, normally the budget presentation is its own special meeting and we usually spend a lot of time on it and I am more than happy to answer every question that you guys have, but I am not going to go through necessarily slide by slide because I think we all want to get out of here. So as much as I can stand up here and talk to you until you all fall asleep, I will try my best to kind of speed this along. If I sleep over anything anybody wants to talk about, I'm more than happy to stop. So we're just going to try to, try to move forward in the interest of time, so. Right here. So to kind of start things off, we have a lot of funds with the city, so I wanted to kind of do a quick breakdown. These will be the funds that the, this board gets to approve the budget for. So the general fund gets approved for at the department level, which means we do, every single department has its own approved budget. Every other fund is just approved at a total expenditure level. So we have the breakdown of where everything comes from, but the board's really only responsible of doing the total dollar amount for anything outside of the general fund. So these are the ones we're going to go over. We do have a lot of other funds with the city that do not get, have approved budgets for various reasons. Some of them are pass-through entities like GALA or Housing, where basically we are just a pass-through. Some get approved by a different board, like the airport authority in the past, the fire board gets approved by their separate boards. And then this board just approves the contribution from the general fund to those boards, but the board, the actual budgets themselves get approved by the individual boards. And then some of them, like the cemetery trust fund or the library endowment fund, the only expenditure out of it is the 80% of whatever the fund collects in interest gets moved into the budget. So it seems there's only one number and it's by rule, there's no need to actually put a budget for those. But those are, if you hear us talk about these funds, these funds do exist, we do have activity in them, but we don't actually give the budgets for these funds. So start off with the general fund. There we go, starting off on the revenue side. These are the categories of revenue, really the, the big three for the general fund are taxes and our governmental revenue and charges for services for the city. This is the current year proposed budget for revenue. Most of these numbers, we already have projections in for, they could still fluctuate, which, so there could still possibly be changes between now and when we approve the budget, but a lot of these numbers are pretty, pretty solid as far as we've gotten the numbers from projected numbers, either for taxes from the assessing department or from the state's already filed projections for their governmental revenue. So we can see that 52% of our general fund revenue comes from taxes, another 28% comes from the government revenue and the 13% comes from charges for services. And it is important to note that the charges for service, services, a lot of that is actually internal service funds, so that's not actual revenue to the city, it's revenue to the general fund where the general fund incurs the expenditures, but then charges the enterprise funds and the various other funds for that, their share of that activity. So it's not, it's a little misleading in fact that it's not actual revenue to the city, but it is to this fund in particular. Revenue trends over the last five years, we can see we're on a, on a slight, slight increase. This year, we're projecting about a six and a half percent increase over last year's proposed budget FY 2023 number. A lot of that comes from property taxes going up this year. Also, we are getting a little bit more state funds. You can see for 2021, 2022, we had a little bit more than we did in 23. A lot of that was just state revenue, ARBA money coming in, special grants that were one-time things that didn't repeat itself. But as far as the stuff that kind of repeats year over year, we are seeing a steady increase because they were projecting about six and a half percent this year. These are just the trends by the different categories. Again, we won't have all of them, just kind of some of the big ones. See taxes are kind of going up. Like I said, our governmental revenue had a bit of a peak during the COVID year with just some extra, extra funds plus we had a couple of grants that we received that year. So those kind of fluctuate based on those. Pretty much everything else you can see is, for over the last couple of years at least, has been pretty steady. We did have things in other revenue that fluctuate just because it's basically the catch-all for anything that doesn't fit in the other categories. That is also, other revenue is where interest income lays and that can fluctuate greatly just depending on the market. Overall, most of the things we're seeing pretty steady trends and nothing really out of the ordinary or out of unexpected on the revenue side. So as we jump into expenditures, and this is true for all, all of the funds, not just the general fund, but some of the assumptions that we were made when we calculated expenditures, we are proposing, city managers proposing a 3% cost of living adjustment for all employees effective 7/123, so that is built into this budget. The assumption is that all employees who are eligible for. The assumption is that all employees who are eligible for a step, are their merit increase, will receive them on their anniversary date. Obviously, those are not forgiven, but for a budget standpoint, we assume everybody will. We have no new full-time positions being added. There were some changes to some part-time employees' structure that we'll get into as we go through, but no new full-time positions being added in this. We're assuming a five percent increase in fringe benefits. That's, a lot of fringe benefits, especially on the healthcare side, is a little tricky because those are based on calendar years, not, and we're based on fiscal years. So we know what our health insurance rate is for the first six months of the year, but we have no idea at this point what it's going to be for the back six months. The last two years, we've seen between a little over four percent increase. So we built the five percent in hopefully as a little bit of a cushion. So that's just the assumption that's five percent for the half of the year beyond what we already have the rates for, a built-in five percent there. The only millage rates that we changed, were, was, are proposing to change is the transit millage, which we talked about. And then the rate increases, I think, as the city manager already mentioned, for the water and sewer are based on option one, what we talked about earlier. That can be adjusted, but that's just what, we had to have something for this original budget. So that's the one that I'm left. Other than expenditures, these are the main kind of categories of expenditures. And again, I'm not going to go through each individual slide just for the sake of time and we can come back when we need to. I really want to focus on these total slides because this is what's really showing a lot of the trends. And I think the trends are kind of the important thing to kind of look at. So for community development, that consists of our economic development, our downtown maintenance, part planning and zoning and parking lots. You can see this year, some of the trends kind of, you can see kind of all over the place as far as this one, just because there's a lot more capital projects can get, could really fluctuate these ones. You can see parking lots, and we had a big capital project in there, really spiked. We do not have any of the downtown parking lots in here currently as those are going to be, we are assuming at this point that those will be paid through ARBA funds. And we don't know yet which fiscal year those are actually going to fall into. So while we are going, moving forward with the parking lots, those are not actually built into this budget. So those will be, when we do figure out exact timing, that will come in. But it'll come in with a revenue and an expenditure that'll wash itself, wash itself out. So it won't need to be, we'll have to add it, but it won't necessarily factor into our overall balance. Planning and zoning's up a little bit this year too. That's the biggest one from a percentage standpoint. That's because our master plan's up for renewal this year. So we've got extra cost in there for help with our master plan. So that's really the, the big change there. Community safety, again, just going to kind of blitz through the, the individual slides and we can go back when we need to for any of these. Pretty steady increase here. Not really a lot of changes year over year from like a total percentage standpoint. A little higher for police this year because last year they didn't have any police vehicles that they replaced. And this year we have two proposed police vehicles in the budget. So a lot of that increase from 2023 to 2024 is in capital from the vehicles. We also did have a change at the, the Fire Board approved a change on how the allocation methodology is split as far as how, which, how much the entities pay into. So the Fire Board budget that was approved a couple of months ago, the actual budget itself was the same budget as the previous year with no increase. But because of that change in methodology, the city's portion is a couple percentages points higher. And it's based now, basically based solely on run data over the last four years. So if fifty-two percent of the calls went to the city of Elma, Elma pays fifty-two percent of the budget for the year. So there used to be a very convoluted formula that factored in a lot of things. At the end of the day, it only changed everybody by a couple percentage points and made everybody's lives a lot easier and simpler. No emergency management there on the ground as well. That was a lot of the COVID money that came in during, or the pandemic. And we're at this point assuming that that is over. So that will drop off as we move forward as well.
Curtis, if I can interrupt for a second. Just a thought occurred to me as you're going through this. And because of the spike due to capital expense, we bought two vehicles this year and we kind of saved our budget last year. We thought we were saving money by not buying the vehicle we should have bought last year. Would it make sense to put a constant in there and perhaps fund, you know, put money in a sinking fund rather than having the year-to-year fluctuations for some of that capital?
So it's absolutely a possibility, I believe.
And then in that way, you know, it might be more transparent as to if changes are occurring. When you look at it, it's not being wild swings because of capital. You're actually looking at pure operations.
Yeah, there, there are different ways to do it. Some, you know, some communities actually have basically a department that is just capital so that there is no capital in any of their general fund departments. That's a, that's a way to present it, perfectly acceptable. I think it used to be a lot more like that when the police department was part of Motor Pool because they were basically paying into that and then their vehicles were being bought out of that.
They're basically renting from Motor Pool.
Basically, so when, when they opted out of that a few years ago, that did kind of change. They kind of, they saved on that, they're not paying into Motor Pool, but now they're buying the vehicles when it happens. So that does make, it makes it a little bit, yeah, more challenging for my, for my year budget.
It might make it easier for everybody to understand if we don't get those capital swings in there that what's really going on with operations.
Yep.
So something to think about.
Definitely something we could look at first.
Thank you.
Executive administration, as far as the number of departments is our biggest, in terms of number of departments. This one's also going to have some, some crazy-looking graphs just because we've had some major changes and departments being added. Human resources wasn't its own department until a couple of years ago. IT wasn't its own department until last year. So those were all zero for a few years and then spiked up. So this one, trend-wise, is a little bit harder to really, really analyze. There are a couple of things going on here I wanted to point out. One of them is for the City Commission. If you see that it went from thirty-seven thousand to two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, back down to thirty. Just a reminder that that was that $250,000 additional MERS payment that was made in 2020. That went, got stuck in the City Commission budget for whatever reason. So I, yeah, not really. Had to go somewhere and that just happened to be where it's at. In a way, it kind of makes it nice because it sticks out like a sore thumb. So it's kind of easy to know where it's at as opposed to kind of burying it. But I'm not really sure it makes, it, it was a general fund expenditure, so it really, at the end of the day, didn't really matter as long as it went into the general fund. So, but that does make, makes making graphs a little, little challenging when you see a spike like that. As far as changes, especially if you look at just changes from the previous year to this year, not a lot of changes in this, in any of these departments. A lot of them are pretty status quo. We have budgeted for four elections this year just because there is a possibility that we could have up to four elections this year. I'm sure Sarah would be very grateful if we do not have four elections this year. But we do budget for the maximum possible each year just because it's not optional. We do have to have them. If for some reason we don't end up having elections, that's money that can then get re-examined and potentially reallocated down the road. So, but we always build that in maximum possible at that time. All right, fiscal services, though. This is finance and assessing are the two major components here. So this one, we can see, has been decreasing over the years, mostly because of finance. There's a lot of things going on there. Partially, finance, usually have six full-time staff, now they have four full-time staff. So a lot lower cost in personnel cost for finance. Also, our audit costs have gone down the last couple of years without needing less assistance. And a portion of IT's budget, before IT was its own budget, came out of finance. So once we actually moved that to their own budget, it decreased our contract cost because, for example, our $30,000 that we paid, roughly $30,000 that we paid to VC3 for our outside services used to come out of the finance budget until IT was its own budget, so that got moved. So some of it is a, just moving it around, some of it are cost savings. And then assessing is pretty status quo year-over-year. Property maintenance, again, some big spikes here, mostly due to capital as, as the mayor said, and it's kind of misleading as far as an operational standpoint. Operationally, both of these budgets are pretty status quo over the last five years. Not a lot of changes. A lot more capital as far as some of the building improvements that have been made or the process of being made here at City Hall that really affected the budget there. And then same thing with Riverside Cemetery. We have, when we get to the capital listing, we'll see, we have a $70,000 capital project in there for this year. So that spike from '23 to '24 for the cemetery is in capital projects, not in operations. So both of these, operationally, pretty stagnant, but can be very affected by capital projects. Parks and culture, another one of these that can be affected by capital and the contributions. So the contribution to the library kind of spikes because we had the year where it got a different way, then added back in. So those are, if we looked at it consistently year over year and just kind of took that out, we could see it'd be pretty consistent. Are proposing the same contributions we did last year for the library of the $100,000. And then Parks and Rec is pretty, pretty similar to last year. Again, capital projects because the pocket park downtown that we have in the proposed budget for this year will be coming out of the Parks and Recreation budget. Transportation. So this would be like your sidewalks, your street lighting, your non-ACT-51 public works expenses. Not a lot of changes here. Most of these are pretty, again, status quo. The sidewalks is the sidewalk replacement program that we have every year that we budget $40,000 every year. And then we also have an additional sidewalk capital project for the Charles Avenue rail trail extension in the budget this year. So other than that, the other ones are pretty much just operational, general operational costs that don't fluctuate much year to year. So again, flew through that and having to answer questions. The capital project summary, these are all the capital projects for just the general fund that we are proposing for this year. I believe in the last commission packet or the city manager newsletter, we showed a preliminary list. We did have to cut a couple of those back in order to get a balanced budget this year. So a couple of those are taken off, but here are the ones that have stayed in. Again, most of these we've talked about as we've went through. But these are the proposed projects and the proposed budgets for all of the capital projects that we're putting on doing out of the general fund this year. Anything that was on here, on the preliminary list that's no longer on here has been kicked off to proposed 2024, or yeah, post-2025 budget. So nothing's been completely removed. Just some of the things that we couldn't fit in this year's budget have been kicked out one year. So that's our current year list. So my favorite slide, especially after last year's budget, is to show this bottom number here that shows zero need for required reserves for fund balance. That means that we have a perfectly balanced budget proposed right now with about $5.6 million in revenue, $5.6 million in expenditures, and a breakdown by personnel, non-personnel, and capital. As you can see there, I have another chairman that's next page there. It really shows kind of what we're looking at. This just shows the difference the last couple of years and where our money is as far as not by department, but by type of expenditure. A good general rule of thumb, every community is different, but when we look at it and I look at historically, it looks like generally if you're at about a 60, 30, 10 split, you're doing, that, that seems to be the most kind of common or most standard as far as about 60% of your costs go into personnel, 30% to operating, and 10% to capital. Last couple of years, we've been under in capital. So we, as that's been an emphasis by the board, we've really tried to focus on when we do need to make cuts to the extent possible to try to cut them out of operations and personnel so that we can keep that capital brought, capital projects budget at about 10% of our total budget. Again, this is not necessarily, has to be a target goal. I'd love to hear as we go forward and we start planning for the future if that's a goal that the commission likes, that they like to see it higher, lower, if this split, what they think of it as far as just being able to plan for the future. But like you said, small changes, but generally speaking, you're looking at about a 60, 30, 10 split in those three categories. So a little more in capital this year. And to do so, we've sacrificed a little bit in personnel and a little bit in operations together. So this is more of a breakdown, and I guess this one's a little bit harder to see, but breakdown by the different types. Again, not a lot of fluctuations from year to year. There's always going to be a few things here and there. Again, a lot depending on capital projects. But this year compared to last year, there's really not that many big swings. Again, community safety, I think, is the highest, and that's because of the, the additional capital there. The couple of ones that went down a little bit were because they had capital projects last year that we didn't have this year. So generally speaking, I think these are, again, they're going to fluctuate a couple of percentage points here and there. But if you look on that, the percentages in the 2024 proposed budget column, year over year, that's about what you're looking at, what your general fund dollars are going to as far as the different departments. So questions concerning the general fund? And these are more of a, not for this year. Obviously, we can make changes this year, but this year's budget's balanced. So these are more of as we go forward, things that we want to think about or things that we should be keeping in the back of our minds, talking about at goal settings, talking about during meetings throughout the year. Like I said, funding for future capital projects, 10% is good. $500,000 of capital project is good. Obviously, if we had our way, we could probably spend $15 million pretty easy. So again, $500,000 sounds like a lot, but then you start looking at some of the projects we like to do and that can, doesn't go as far as what you would think it would go. So just kind of figuring out, you know, what are the, what are our capital projects over the next five to 10 years? What do we need to be saving for? How much money do we need? And how much of that percentage of the total budget do we really want to, do we want to make sure we're allocating annually to capital projects? We've talked about a couple of times, we have some vacancies, vacant positions within the general fund. Like I said, finance is down. We have outfilled the previously Assistant City Manager position. Engineering is down, personnel, police is down, personnel. Right now, I'd say we're all getting by. I think we're doing a really good job as a staff. But long-term, is this, maybe we, at some point, we'll have to make the decision, is this the new norm or is the goal to get those positions back? And if that goal is there, obviously, right now, we're all spent. So if you want to add anything, you're going to have to take away from something else in order to make payments, or we need to, like that last bullet, we need to have a higher revenue base to be able to afford it. So again, not something I think we'd talk about necessarily now, but as far as moving forward about those vacant positions and, you know, prioritizing which ones we'd want to fill first. Do we even need to fill some of them? And how we're going to fit those in? And then I added IT on here too. I think we've talked about it a few times, our IT infrastructure, a lot of it is old. We've been doing a much better job over the last two years of replacing some of our IT infrastructure. I still, I personally, this is more of a personal moment probably, still feel like we're a long ways to go. And IT is just an area that seems to be, historically speaking, one of the first areas cut when we need to have budget savings. And sometimes that makes total sense, but at some point, like with capital and like with everything else, that's going to catch up to us. And we've seen that in a couple of areas where we've gotten lucky. Instead, our server was about eight and a half years old with an expected life of five years. The fact that that didn't blow up on us is probably a miracle. Again, I don't know what the right answer is because obviously to add to it, you're going to have to take away from something else. But long-term, the replacement schedules we use are, I worry about the sustainability. And also, we talked about wanting to, or we've talked about in the past, wanting to eventually try to get more cloud-based and less on-premise-based, which I think is also a good idea to, to start planning for, but there's a lot of cost in that. The last quote I think we got from BSNA, the implementation to move BSNA to the cloud would be a little over $100,000 and it would be about an 18-month process. So is that something that we want to do in the future? Probably, it's probably going to be one of those things that eventually will become inevitable. Not necessarily this year, but at some point, we'll have to figure out how we're gonna, if it is a priority, how we're going to be able to afford to do some of these IT upgrades. So that's really the, the general fund. Some of the, again, I know I looked through that probably really, really fast compared to previous years, but the good news is, like I said, and I repeat it again, because I'm kind of proud of it after where we were last year, we have a balanced budget already. We've, all the department heads have signed off on when we had to make some cuts because our original budget was a little bit, came in a little bit higher. Every department head was able to find ways that they could save a little bit of money to get us down to balance. So I think everybody is content with where their budget's at and we're in a good spot as far as where we're at in the general fund. So I'll pause for a second. If any of the general fund questions, before we go into the other funds.
Here's the first question. Just a comment from me. Thank you, nice presentation. I think you did a good job putting everything together. Feel a lot more confident again this year in the numbers we're seeing and I think the validity is there. So I certainly have a great deal of appreciation for that. We'd like to highlight for everybody the fact that you mentioned our audit costs were dipped slightly because, largely because we didn't have confidence in our auditors, didn't have confidence in the work that we were presenting in the past. So kudos to Curtis, your team, and Eric, and whoever else is involved, Tom and the whole management staff, the whole team at the city for making that happen. That's something that certainly needed to happen and it came together pretty quickly in the recent past. So thank you for that. That was great news. Personnel costs are just huge. I mean, it's just a large part of what we do as people. We work with and for people by, with our people. So I would like to, I think now that we have some good financial footing to start with, delve into some of our personnel costs a little deeper at some point in not too distant future. We've talked in the past about our, you know, retirement plans, our defined benefit plan versus a defined contribution plan. I think we need to take a serious look at that. What are the implications of continuing with basically what I would consider to be an antiquated system of a defined benefit plan? I know it's expensive to get out of them, but I think in the long run, it's beneficial for the employees and the employer to move to a defined contribution plan. So I think that's worth some conversation from this board and with the staff. So, but thank you for everything you've put together so far. Very impressive.
And I will say that we, there are meetings that are already being had, more information gathering and in fact finding, we have had meetings with, we've had meetings with communities who have switched to really kind of dive into, you know, what did you see, what did you, so we are doing, we are, under early stages, but we have started that process and we are doing our homework.
Yeah, and I would encourage you maybe start sharing a little more with this board so that we can begin to understand what all is involved in the cost and benefits versus the trade offs. So because there's no panacea for any of this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else on the general fund before we move on?
Everybody?
Thank you.
All right. Well, again, we're going to kind of fly through some of these because a lot of them are balanced and I don't, and a lot of them are kind of status quo. Major street fund, projected revenue is about one point one million, projected expenditures are one point one millions. We are projecting a balanced budget in this department. Note there in the bottom there that we have about three and a half million in the net position as of six thirty twenty twenty two. Sounds like a lot of money. We have Pine Avenue in a couple of years. Trust me, that number will not be nearly as high after we do Pine Avenue. So this is one of those situations there. We only do a major street every six years if we're lucky. So it builds up, builds up, builds up until we have a major project and then we basically spend it down and start over again. So the reason that it looks, if it looks high to people, it's because we're building up and we are ready to spend it. So. See some trends here. We do have a capital project for the major streets this year. This is Bridge.
It's Michigan Avenue.
Michigan Avenue. That's right. Michigan Avenue. So we do have four hundred thousand dollars of capital this year for Michigan Avenue.
Is that all from the funding, I forget the funding source?
Eighty two thousand of it is, is going to be paid for out of that. It's basically COVID money that was given to them.
So eighty two of the four hundred has come out of that?
Yes.
Local streets also, we're at projecting a balanced budget, six hundred and twenty thousand in revenue, six hundred and twenty thousand in expenditures. You can see this looks like a dip compared to previous years and it is. Couple of reasons, we don't have a capital outlay project this year that's not part of the street millage fund. So it dips a little bit for that also, and we'll get into this on the next slide. Some of the operational costs in the major streets and local streets have been shifted over to the, shifted over, but will now be part of the two oh four, our street millage fund. We did talk to the auditors about the best way to present that. Basically, now that we have the, so the, starting this year, let's move into this one, starting this year, we do have the extra one, one mil that's being generated from our street millage fund. And so a portion of the street, before, the entire street millage fund went into street reconstruction. Now there's going to be two components of the street millage fund. There's going to be the the reconstructions, which is part of those, the six year plan. Then there's also going to be for some, you know, mill, yeah, the maintenance of other ones that were not, are not part of the reconstruction, but maintenance projects and those will now come out of this fund. So part of it is a shift in where the money's coming from. So that's where you'll see here on the operation portion of the budget, we went from generally speaking, though the operation costs are really your engineering costs. This year, in addition to engineering costs, we do have, I think of that, I think we have a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and twenty five thousand dedicated to doing just street work, maintenance work outside of the street reconstruction. So and those can be done on, we've done mostly with a focus on local streets, but can be done on major and local streets. So that will be kind of the new status quo going forward, but it is going to be a new change where we don't have, this fund used to be again specifically for those six street projects that we approve every six years. Now there will be two components of it, the street project and the maintenance project. And the street project for this year is Richmond. So that is the capital. The spike this year is obviously we're doing two, we're doing both Iowa and Harvard this year. So it makes twenty twenty three look spiked because we did an extra max year project that year. Component units, DDA, projected revenue of twenty four five, projected expenses of twelve five. Again, we look at trends, most years very, very status quo, big spike in twenty twenty two because of the hundred thousand dollars contribution to the capital outlet project to do the study for the parking lots downtown. So take that out pretty much each year, very status quo, usually generate around the twenty two to twenty five thousand spend in the twelve to fifteen thousand in a normal year. The library, again, projected revenue of six eighty eight seven fifty, projected expenditure is six eighty eight seven fifty. So this is not funding depreciation, but a balanced operating budget for the library, which again, after last year, I think is a huge, huge success. And kudos to them for some of the cuts that they made to help get us to a balanced budget. Pretty much each year, I mean, the biggest thing here, the expenditures are status quo or going up a little bit. The library, the concern with the library is that they've had a decrease in revenue, especially from penal fines. We saw about a thirty five thousand dollar drop in penal fines last year from previous year. We've been told to anticipate a drop again this year, so we have a budgeted another decrease. We'll wait and see. Another thing that's really tricky with the library is the two big, two bigger sources of funding for the library are the countywide millage and the penal fines. And neither of those numbers we actually get until after the fiscal year is over and they're retroactively applied. The property taxes from the county, we can kind of predict because they tend to follow the same trends as the cities, but it makes budgeting a little bit tricky in the fact that you, you're kind of guessing your expenditures throughout the year, guessing your revenue throughout the year and you don't actually know your two or biggest revenue numbers until the year's over. So then you kind of have to, at that point, there's really not much you can do about it except for playing accordingly for the next year. So, but as far as expenditures, like I said, pretty status quo with small increases, a little bit of a shift in where the increases are, the costs are coming from, a little higher personnel increases. And they've had to make some, some cuts in operations to kind of offset the personnel, increase in personnel costs and some of that lost revenue from the penal fines. But at the end of the day, they got to a balanced budget without funding depreciation, which was the goal. And we'll talk about in the future, we'll have to talk about a way to get to funding depreciation, but for right now, at least we're at at least a balanced operating budget. In the enterprise fund, State Street Plaza, same thing. We have a balanced budget outside of funding for depreciation. We do not fund for depreciation or not currently covering our depreciation costs with our funding model for State Street, but we are at least covering our operational costs and having a balanced budget. We are starting to see a spike in the cost here. The building's getting older, getting a little more worn down. We're having to put a little more maintenance into it. Also, a big portion of the operating cost for State Street are your consumers and your water and sewer, which end up getting refunded or paid for, the tenants pay for that cost. So it ups the revenue and the operating, but it does make operating expenses higher when our water rates or sewer rates, consumers rates are going up. Again, we recoup that money because they pay for it, but it does make the original budget a lot higher. So. Transportation, again, working record, balanced budget, not funding depreciation, about one point five million in revenue, one point five million in expenditures. Transit's one that we add, another one we intentionally don't fund depreciation. This is something we've talked about over the last year or two for the simple fact that basically doing so just, it builds up the fund balance because if you're funding depreciation, the theory is that you, you fund your depreciation, goes into your fund balance until you need to buy a capital project and that's where you use your money to buy your capital project. In transit's case, the, the items that they would be paying depreciation on are items that they don't pay for out of their fund balance or pay for by the state through state, our state capital grants or federal capital, I think it was the state, but through capital grants. So really funding depreciation, all that does is build up a fund balance. So not saying that that's necessarily a bad thing, but it's not a necessity. And part of not doing that is what's kind of allowed us to, allowed us to propose the decrease in the millage this year. So. Again, trends, when Slipper came on board, costs got up, so did revenue. This year, looking basically, again, pretty outside of funding depreciation, we're looking at a pretty status quo expenditure year for the most part. Wastewater, we talked about it, how we have right now the revenue number here built in of two point eight million. Next year does include if we went with option one, we have one point two in operating expenditures, which would leave us roughly one point four to spend on revenue. Again, it sounds like a big number, but we just approved it, two million dollar capital projects. So you can see how that doesn't go, doesn't go too far. And that also includes, so outside of any new capital projects, that is funding your outstanding bond payments for, that is outstanding down the wastewater, which I think is about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. So you have to pay that. And then if you're funding depreciation, depreciation's roughly four hundred thousand dollars a year for seventy five, is what we budgeted for this year. So you're funding that on top of that, basically you're, that one point four million, your eight hundred thousand of it is before you even actually add new projects, just being able to pay for your depreciation, pay for your current outstanding bonds. So we do believe that as long as we get a low interest loan like we've talked about, that that will be enough that will cover both our operational and our capital plans going forward. The list of capital projects, so again, just to kind of give the, the public and the commission a good sense of what we are looking to do with that, with this large increase that we've been proposing. These are the list of capital projects that we will intend to complete over the next one to two years. Basically, everything in here is being planned on either being done now or being done with the loan that we plan on getting. Some of these projects are big enough, it's going to take a year or two to complete, but they will all be done basically in the next, we're calling them budgeted in the, for this year just because we will start construction on these or start the engineering stuff on them this year. So these are the list of the projects. So as Eric mentioned, we have readjusted some of these costs based on some of the costs we've seen and some of what our other municipalities are seeing with their costs, projections. Right now, I'm not gonna lie, right now, some of this is shooting in the dark. Like I said, the last two, the last two capital projects we've gotten in, one of them was, I think, on the sewer side. One of them, I think, was sixty four percent over budget. One of them was at eight percent under budget. So. We did our best. We're, we're taking all the information we can possibly get. We're talking to engineers, we're talking to other people, hoping that we've built in enough, but. Yeah, it's just, in this, I've never seen cost fluctuations like this. We're hoping we've got enough in there. If we don't, we have to either talk about scaling back some of these projects or talk about kicking some of them out or talk about additional funds. But we feel as good as we can possibly feel at this point that we've done our research, done our homework and put our best guess in here for what these are going to cost us. So. Big list, hopefully a, a list, like I said, a lot of these things, I think Eric mentioned, a lot of these things long overdue, so getting, getting things done. Water distribution, two point nine million projected revenue, one point seven million projected expenditures of operating expenditures for this year. Looking at the trends and a little bit of a increase, but in the end of the day, really, things are about what they are, that there was a dip. Looks like there was a little bit of a dip in twenty twenty two. I think a lot of that was just some of the turnover and some kind of a lot of things that just kind of odd one off things or things that got pushed off the year. Because if you really take that outlier out, basically from twenty twenty on, you're seeing a pretty consistent steady increase in where our operational costs and our personnel costs are over there. Again, capital projects that we plan on doing with this, we have a few, few water main projects and then some of our other capital projects, including the meter, water meter replacements and new meter, meter radios. This is something we've talked about a lot in the past about trying to do on a, you know, five year, six year replacement plan, eight year replacement plan. Financially, there's pros and cons to both, but financially and especially right now, given the state of the fund, really the only way that makes a lot of financial sense at this point is to lump this in with the loan and really do all of the replacements in one year. Spreading it out also spreads out the replacement, which is a benefit, but realistically speaking, especially if the low interest loans that we've been, totally qualified for, based on their longevity, based on their interest rates, the best way to actually do the water meter replacements from a financial standpoint right now is to lump them in and do them all at once as opposed to trying to do them over a five year period. So.
Just where you're talking about that reader radios, that's remotely reading the meters, is that correct?
Yes. Is this the truck one?
Yes.
Yes. So they would be, there would basically be a device that's, that would be on one of the water trucks that as the truck drove around town, as long as it was within a certain distance, it would pick up a read and it would pick it up and send it back to basically our central base here. So instead of getting somebody going out and physically touching the pad at every single place, as they drove around, they'd pick up reads and we'd be able to just come basically run a, assuming that they caught everything or if they didn't, we can always run a report that says like last read and let them know like what areas they hadn't caught by the time we could bill. It would make their lives easier. It would make finances like a lot easier too, because instead of having one read a month, makes, you know, doing final reads, it makes doing estimates, it makes doing all that stuff a lot easier. So.
Does it make financial sense to move in that direction? Is the technology cheap enough in the savings and man hours, person hours, excuse me?
We, we have.
Makes sense to do that? We've done that analysis?
We have done analysis on that. We've also talked to at least two other communities who have switched to this and they have said the same, they have seen a benefit in it. Especially because a lot of the reading, the guys are already out in the truck, in the truck running around. It's not like you're specifically sending somebody out and saying, hey, go drive around all the neighborhoods. They're going around.
So you put the equipment out of the truck that's out working?
That's just out, yeah, it's part of the normal fleet anyway. So.
You could, you could be within five blocks. So if you, like if you're on, let's say Gulfside Street, it's going to, from what we understand, it'll pick up three to five streets over. So you're not driving every segment. You just drive around and picks it up. You miss a couple, you drive out, oh, there to pick that up. So. As opposed to doing a cell phone service where we have to sign a contract and then after 10 years, you're basically bound in blood with whatever costs that they go up. So we thought this would give us a little, a lot more options if it is cheaper and it also bodies us tied later on when we're not married to something that we potentially not be able to afford. So.
Thank you. Appreciate the background.
And then the governized service replacements, what we've talked about with the engineering team is for, if we, we are able to, when we apply for the SRF loans, we are able to lump all known, already currently known governized service replacements into the, into the loan. So what we would do is this, we talked about how we have to do five percent each year. This would basically do everything we know of right now and start us back at prime zero. So then we'd still have to do five percent each year, but it would only be the ones that we're discovering through our replacements. So instead of doing seven to 10 a year, you're probably only doing one to two a year after this because we're front loading as much as we possibly can. So that will also, again, upfront costs a little bit, but in the long run, will save us and then if inflation costs and stuff like that continue, the more we can do now, the more we can save down the road. And it's also personnel time. So.
To let them know why we can't use USDA on that one.
Yeah. So USDA does not allow, allow for us to do that portion of it because it's not, because it's not what we actually own.
It's on private property.
Yeah. We can't do anything through USDA loan that's on private property. So through SRF loan, it qualifies. Through USDA, it doesn't. So that's going to be one of those, depending on which one we get, will depend on what we can do. It still might make sense to, to try to front load as many of them as possible if we have to go the USDA route, but we will, at this point, because we've got an SRF loan in, it's in there, we're shooting our shot. So that's our goal. And then the five ninety six fund, we did, like I said, we've talked about, we are proposing a deficit this year, but the fund balance has enough that it can support it. Besides just normal costs, the other thing about the five ninety six fund, why I feel comfortable taking out of fund balance is five ninety six fund doesn't actually own any of their equipment. All their equipment is owned by Motor Pool and they rent it. So as far as, we always talk about how it's good to have a fund balance to plan for future capital projects. Well, in this fund, there really aren't capital projects to plan for because if there was a need for a capital project, it would actually get paid for out of Motor Pool and then five ninety six fund pays for it as they use it. So the need for, depending on what fund we talk about, we talk about depreciation a lot and make sure we're funding it in areas like water and sewer where, you know, we're paying for a couple million dollar projects at a time. It really makes sense to have as healthy of a fund balance and make sure we're funding depreciation. In this area, probably just less of a need because really you're only ever going to use it for, if you're not buying capital, you're only ever using it for unexpected expenditures. And the major expenditure, come on Motor Pool, not out of here. So that's one of the reasons why I'm supportive of trying to use down that fund balance. This has also been one of the most consistent funds as far as expenditures to predict from an operational cost standpoint. The only time we really see spikes, we saw a spike the last couple of years. The biggest thing of that wasn't really total hours. We've talked about it before. It was that we had more full time hours instead of part time hours in it just because of our inability to keep seasonals through the fall and the leaf program. So as far as total hours go, this has been, it's almost one of the most fascinating, almost like planned it kind of things where every year it pretty much. like planet kind of things, where every year, it pretty much, you can pretty much nail down what it's going to cost, because every year, the hourly, number of hours that we spend in this program are of the same, so it just depends on what your personnel costs are. So, I feel comfortable that, again, not say that there can't be an unintended expenditure or something that jumps out at us, but of all of the funds, this is probably the one I feel safest saying that we probably have a healthier fund balance than we need. And then the last one, internal service fund, so this is Motorpool. We don't, we don't actually approve for budget for Motorpool because it's a, basically, it's a pass-through, but I did think it was important to talk about the capital projects that, that Motorpool's planning for, so they have some security upgrades, pressure washer, and then their annual equipment replacement program, so those are the major capital projects coming out of that fund. Some questions concerning these other funds outside of the general fund? Talk about raising costs of capital projects. Yeah, I, if we start seeing 60% increases as the new norm, we have to really talk about what we're doing if it starts to plateau. We just, it seems like every time we put something out, right now it's a crapshoot, so we'll continue to monitor, we'll continue to analyze every time we get something in, we keep, even not just our own costs, we keep very close eyes on our neighbors and some other communities that are similar to us, and whenever they have a capital project out, we're talking to them and looking at what their bids come in at so that we can do the best we can to try to predict what these capital projects are, but this is where front-loading it and getting the loan will help, help with that a little bit, but if we see major increases, increases, we'll have to be back here to discuss the plan. Same thing with general fund, if our vacant positions within some funds, I know water is down a full-time position, public works is down a full-time position, so, again, same conversation we have with the general fund as far as where is that on primary scale? Can each of those departments afford it? Do they, what level of urgency is there? Just kind of conversations to have. Capital improvements at State Street, talked about how that building's getting older, it's getting, there's a lot of maintenance that needs done. It has a semi-healthy fund balance, so if we do need to take some, some money out of the, that fund balance to pay for some of the capital improvements, we can do that, but I know there's been some different conversations throughout the years of what we're doing out there and our costs out there and things like that, so as we go forward, I think, continue to have those conversations, and I think City Manager and I have talked about how that will be something that we really look at too with this master plan as far as the plan for that building and what can we afford, what we want to put into it, so on and so forth. The Motorpool fund balance, this is probably going to be one of those, next year's, you know, it seems like every year, every year's, the what was this year's big thing, next year's is probably going to be the Motorpool fund, so. This historically through, I went back to 2000, so 2000 through about 2015, historically ran a fund balance of between 800,000 and 1.4 million at any given point. We are basically down to where after this upcoming fiscal year budget, we have enough to do the capital projects that we planned for this year, and then we are pretty much done with having any sort of fund balance left in our Motorpool fund, so. Going forward, not only because we don't have fund balance to fall back on, but we need to be able to pay for, if we do have any, you know, equipment replacement, which we do every year, and capital improvements and stuff over there, we're going to have to consider how we're going to fund that. Basically, the only two options, really, there's only one real option, is that you charge all of your users of your equipment a higher rate, and, but that's going to affect, when you talk about some of these balanced budgets, if we increase Motorpool's budget, it's going to have a triple down effect to the general fund, to the library, to the street projects, to 596 Fund, all of them, so. Again, this year we're balanced, this year we're covered, we have enough money to do what we plan on doing this year, but after this year, that'll be kind of the thing that we need to start planning on and start just deciding on how we want to treat Motorpool, even just in theory, not even just necessarily numbers going forward, so that we can make sure that when we do have a major capital project, that we're not caught off guard and we have a plan for it. And then, talked a few times about the library operations and their funding for capital improvements, the fact that right now, they're not funding the depreciation, their operations are covering, are being covered, so we're good there, but if, and when they end up needing capital projects like rough repair, any, anything like that, right now, they really don't have the fund balance built up to get it, and they're not necessarily adding to it unless they get some private donations or grants or anything like that, so, again, is it a concern right now? No, because we have a balanced budget. Will it be a concern in the future? Yes, so just continuing to, and this is probably true with all of them, the library's probably the one with the, the smallest fund balance right now, so they're the ones that would be the hardest hit if a major or unanticipated capital project or any major expenditure that's unplanned for came about, so. I see really those as the, again, not necessarily this year questions, but as we go forward, and we have continuous conversations throughout the year, and we have full setting, these are really the things that I think should be in the back of our minds and thinking about from a financial standpoint going forward. That's what I got. Quicker this year, I think.
Dang, you need a water.
Come here.
Over there, so. Thank you very much, Curtis, it's very nice to sit here and you are a great presenter, you do a great presentation, and thanks to you and your staff. It's a lot better than I spent in previous years.
Here, here.
I mean, except for your last year, but prior to that.
Oh, that better than much. Every year, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And other comments? Well, yeah, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
We get ahead of motion, okay, so, any comments? All those in favor receiving that presentation, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion is carried, we've received the presentation. Next up is consideration of resolution to set a public hearing from May 9, 2023 at 6:00 PM for review of the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget, county city budget and related property tax rates, also to set a special meeting for May 16, 2023 at 6:00 PM for additional review of the proposed budget if needed. Your pleasure.
As it turns out, in human health, really.
How'd it turn out? Wait a minute. We have a motion support on the table, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no, motion is carried, we've set a couple meetings. Appropriations, is anyone in favor of paying the bills?
Support.
Motion's support, anybody have comments or questions? Questions on the bills? Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried, we pay the bills, thank you. Mr. Comments? Michelle?
Again, thanks to Eric, Curtis, Dave, and the staff for all the hard work that they put into the last few meetings and the budget, all the department heads have come together. Like I stated, it was rough there for a few years, and the last couple of years have been refreshing, heading in the right direction, so thank you.
Yeah, I admitted tonight how much work had gone into all of that, that was, that was a lot, so, but I very much appreciate it.
Okay.
Yes, diggle, and the fact that you obviously know what you're talking about when you explain it to us, and I, in my limited capacity of financial knowledge, understand what you're talking about as well, so I truly appreciate it. It's been a long time coming, and I appreciate what you and everyone is doing to, to make this much better and understandable and heading in the right direction, and so thank you.
Okay, Amy?
Just thanks again to Curtis and Dave and Eric.
Roger.
Thank you, I really appreciate from you guys and from Eric as well in getting that water rate table that, you know, we've been kicking around to a point where we can deal with that, it's, it's a lot better.
Sarah? Adam?
I am not a city commissioner, but I was also impressed with Eric, Dave, and Curtis' great presentation, and thank you, nothing else from me, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Eric?
Just from the planning side of things, Alamos Fire is coming out May 1st, kick that reboot, and we should have our RFPs back for the master planning fairly soon, in the next couple of weeks, so that'll also be kicking out, so looking forward to getting those items up and also.
Okay, great, thank you, and in addition to everybody's, kudos to, everything's been taking place tonight, everything we've heard, it's great information, reliable information, it's good to hear. Thanks to Eric and all the team, all the way down to everybody that does a great job, you know, down to everybody that's who believes in doing whatever they do, it's, that we don't see, we drive by all this stuff all the time, it just works, so, thanks to everybody for what they do. With that, we'll open up the floor up to the members of the public, if anyone would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes to share your thoughts with the commission. Who would like to be first? Laura, are you coming up?
No.
You won't?
I have to.
Yeah, you don't, you have a comfortable chair that we have, huh? Anybody? Last call, okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Support. Motion's support, last chance for comments, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion is carried, we are adjourned, thank you very much, appreciate your time, everybody, it was a rather lengthy meeting for us. Next time you come, you'll share.